Thank you, Scott. Well, good evening, everybody, and I'm going to welcome you in advance here to the virtual meeting of the Edina City Council, held one day post-general election, presidential election cycle. It is Wednesday, November 4th, 2020, and 7:01 PM. You know from listening in before, or if you don't, I'll tell you right now that this meeting is being held electronically in order to comply with Governor Walz's Stay Safe, Minnesota order, and to ensure the safety of all of our residents and all of our staff, as well as the council members. All members of the city council, the staff, the presenters are all participating from their homes or their offices. Before we begin, there's a few things that we need to cover to help those listening in and hoping to participate in portions of the meeting. And incidentally, with respect to that, if you are listening in, you're going to be able to do, and I'll talk about this momentarily, do live testimony at 800-374-0221, enter conference ID 4975469. You can watch the meeting live in a few different ways. Edina TV, at Comcast Channels 813 or 16, 813 in high def, facebook.com/Edinamn, or edinamn.gov/livemeeting. So there's a few different options you have for being able to watch the meeting live this evening. The city, of course, is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on all of the matters before the council. We've been collecting public input through our city council correspondent's web form, our voicemail on our engagement site, bettertogetheredina.org. It's important that all of you know that have submitted comments, that they've been submitted, and they've been received and read prior to the start of this meeting. And they'll be given the appropriate level of equal thought and consideration as part of the record in this matter. Tonight, there's only going to be one opportunity to call in and provide comment via phone, and there are no public, that's because there are no public hearings tonight. So during the community comment portion of the agenda, which will be coming up shortly, you're allowed to speak about anything that's not on the council's agenda tonight or scheduled for a future public hearing. So again, if you want to call in for the public comment portion of the agenda, call 800-374-0221, conference ID 4975469. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our city manager, Scott Neal, will be the timekeeper, and he'll let you know when the time is up, so that you can wrap up your comments. And I'll remind you again when we get to community comment about this opportunity. So thanks in advance for your patience and cooperation, as we all work together to make these virtual meetings work online using different types of software, and almost 20 people participating from all different places. We hope there won't be any issues, but we'll try to get them corrected as soon as we can, if there are some that we need to deal with. So now, we'll call the meeting officially to order, and we'll do roll call. And I think Clerk Allison is with us after working so hard on the election, but still insisting on being here for the city council meeting tonight. Clerk Allison?
Actually, Mayor Hovland, I'll handle it. Sharon is a special guest tonight. So for roll call, Councilmember Brindle?
Hi, here.
Councilmember Fisher?
Here.
Councilmember Staunton?
Here.
I'm concerned we lost Councilmember Anderson during your opening remarks, Mayor. Is Councilmember Anderson here?
He has had a technical issue, and it might be good if Ryan Browning could reach out to him.
Okay, I will send him a message. And Mayor Hovland?
Here. Well, thanks, folks. For Clerk Allison, we talked about this a little bit before the meeting started. Our city clerk and her team of employees at the city, all the election judges, well over 100 in number, the folks that worked on absentee balloting, you know, in cold days out in the parking lot, collecting ballots from people, making sure that they were done correctly, notifying them if they weren't, so they could come back and have their vote count. Just an incredible performance by the volunteers in our community, Republicans and Democrats alike that serve our city as election judges, and just want to extend our thank you, our gratitude for all of those hours of hard work that you put in to make our election system function properly, fairly, cleanly. And Clerk Allison, especially to you as the leader of that group, thank you so much for all of you, all that you've done to make this historic election run so smoothly. We're really appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So next is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to stand for the pledge. I think only my mic will be on during the recital of the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll do that now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening that was published to the general public as required. And is there anyone who wishes to modify the form of meeting agenda? Otherwise, entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as shown.
Second.
Motion by Member Fisher, second by Member Brindle, to approve the meeting agenda as shown. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Bennerott?
Councilmember Fisher?
Hi.
Councilmember Staunton?
Hi.
Councilmember Brindle?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi. The form of meeting agenda that was published is approved. Now, we are going to go to community comment, and we're going to hear from residents who would like to speak to us about something that's not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Again, if you want to participate in community comment, call 800-374-0221, conference ID 4975469, or 4975469. An operator will ask your name and street address. They'll put you in the queue to speak, and Director Bennerott will bring you into the council. Just a reminder, you'll have three minutes to express your comments or concerns to the council this evening. So Director Bennerott, do we have anybody on the line this evening?
We do. We do. We have two people in the queue right now. Our first caller tonight is Lori Groats. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Ms. Lori Groats? Lori, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Ms. Groats, you're on with the council. You can go ahead and give us your full name and address when you're ready.
Scott, can you please unmute intercalls line?
Park Place. A little over six weeks ago, I called in during community comment and requested that residents be allowed to get a login for a username and a password, so that they would be able to access public documents over the internet for permitting. Because City Hall is closed, residents can no longer go into City Hall to get this. I haven't heard anything in the last six weeks. So I'm calling to request, I would like to receive electronic copies of all submissions for 5508 Park Place. It will be a teardown. I would like the documents for building, planning, and engineering. I want them also to include if there are any plans that say they are copyrighted. Copyrighted plans are covered, fall under the federal fair use laws for printed copyrighted materials. And the public has a right to see those as long, and iPad also has already opined on it that those are public. The only time you run into an issue is if somebody decides to use those documents without the permission of the architect, and then it becomes a civil issue, and that's between private parties, and it has nothing to do with the city. So I guess that's all that I have to ask for, except that perhaps maybe we can get an update about how residents can be getting these documents. I haven't seen where you've been able to log in and look at them electronically. The contractors can do it, and the homeowner can do it, but not the public. So right now, the public can't get to any of these documents, but yet construction continues and is going on. And as far as the teardown at 5508 Park Place, received a letter from the contractors stating that they're not having a teardown meeting due to COVID. So without these documents, essentially, the neighbors are in the dark. Thank you so much for your time and assistance. It's greatly appreciated.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Groats.
Our next caller tonight is Mr. Andrew Brown. Operator, will you please unmute Mr. Brown's line? Mr. Brown, please begin by clearly stating your full name and address for the record.
Andrew Brown, 5512 Park Place in Edina. Got a couple things here real quick. Requesting update on Fire Station Number Three. Again, it's my understanding that we're going to have some sort of briefing this fall or this winter, so I'd like to understand when that was going to occur. Would also like to ask why we're not fast-tracking Lewis Ridge and Strackhour Park shelters. They're in desperate need of replacement. They're on the unfunded list. I don't understand why Edina doesn't feel that they can't go ask for private funding from like a UHC, or a Best Buy, or an Ecolab. And pretty perturbed that we're not actively doing that as a community. Also, would like to know when the next update on Grand View Development will be. It's been a decade. We haven't really moved on this. Part of the original proposal on that was to actually pay off some of the debt related to the city's situation. So it would be good to keep on that. Also, the petition last week from significant members of the Edina hockey community, I'd like to actually see some sort of commission or some sort of guideline as far as how we're going to fund and re-update that facility. It's supposed to be the jewel in the crown, and quite frankly, it's not. So, and then the last thing, or last couple things, I was really disappointed in Public Works. It took until today to get asphalt on 58th Street, east of France Avenue. That was a huge burden on that community, my mom, myself, trying to get around that. There needs to be an autopsy on what happened with Public Works regarding that. Best practices, what occurred, what we should have done better on that. And then finally, I'm living south of that teardown. Don't understand why. I understand and appreciate keeping everybody healthy from COVID. However, we're all living in a Zoom world. We all know the rules, about six foot apart. It was 76 degrees today, and yet, a lot of these developers are skirting the rules and getting around having a neighborhood meeting. And so that's pretty disappointing, because it's kind of like, if we can get around something, we're going to do it. So I hope to hear back from staff, and I hope to hear back from the city manager and city council regarding where we kind of stand on this fire station and these park shelter replacements, and actually getting some stuff moving. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And council, I do not have anyone else on the line at this time, but because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, I'd recommend we wait just a minute or so before moving on. My clock shows at 7:15, so I will let you know at 7:16 that you can move on, or if I have a caller before then.
Thank you.
16, so I think it's safe to move on with your meeting.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on from community comment now, where we have residents commenting. We've also developed a practice over the past few years of having the city manager respond to community comments that were made at the prior meeting. So two weeks from now, middle of November, Manager Neal will be responding to the comments and inquiries from our residents Lori Groats and Andrew Brown. And I think there were some, a couple of, or at our last meeting, that Manager Neal wants to address. So Manager Neal, I'll turn it over to you for response to community comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. At our last meeting on October 20th, we had one person who contributed at community comment. It was resident at 5512 Park Place. And there was, there were a number of questions, observations, and appreciations, I think, statements about interactions with staff, about an impending residential redevelopment project that was next door to this person. So that, there wasn't anything to respond to there. But one question that came up, and it came up again tonight, is what's happening with Fire Station Three. We have identified three potential sites for Fire Station Three. We're currently having those sites analyzed by the same, by the same group that did our study indicating where they ought to be. So they're looking not only at the transportation elements of them, but also the development of the three sites as well. Because these three sites may be, may be required to be purchased by the city, we're using the real estate exemption in terms of how we talk about this matter in a public setting. So when we get close to having an evaluation completed of the respective real estate values of each one of these sites, we would like to have a closed session with council and make a selection, or at least get some kind of preference from the council. But that's where we are in that. It is moving ahead as we speak.
Very good. Thank you, Manager Neal. That cause any inquiries from council members? Okay, we'll move on. The next matter in front of us on the agenda is the potential adoption of the consent agenda. Is there any council member that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as shown?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Fisher. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to adoption of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Staunton?
Hi.
Councilmember Brindle?
Hi.
Councilmember Fisher?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi. Consent agenda items are adopted in a single motion. Next, we're going to move on to special recognitions and presentations. That part of the agenda has a couple matters for us this evening to address. And the first is the introduction of Grace Hancock, who is our new sustainability coordinator. And the introduction is going to be handled by our engineering director, Chad Milner, and Manager Neal may have some comments as well. Ms. Hancock, welcome. Nice to see you in person. We've read your resume, and we're pleased with your hiring, and eager to have you on board with us here. So Director Milner?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, we're super excited. It's my pleasure to introduce Grace. She's been with us for a month. We're really excited to work with her on advanced sustainability within the city. So with that, I think I'll hand it over to Grace, if you don't mind, Mayor, and she can provide a little background, and maybe some of the things she's seen in her first month with the city.
Thank you, Director Milner. Ms. Hancock?
Thanks, Chad. Thanks, Mayor Hovland. Councilmembers, thank you for having me on tonight. I'm glad to join Edina and its effort to become a more sustainable and resilient community. I'm coming into this role having spent the last 10 years or so working in the environmental nonprofit space, and really looking to find ways to better connect resources to the most meaningful work at hand. This spring, I finished a master's program in environmental policy at Duke University, where I focused on city-level strategies to address climate change in a way that is just and equitable for communities. So I'm eager to apply this perspective in Edina, and I'm looking forward to sharing some good work with you in 2021. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock. Any questions or comments? Manager Neal, anything you wanted to add?
No, just to say that we're really happy to have Grace joining our team. We like what she has done in the past, and we think she's going to be a real asset to us in the future here.
Thank you. Other council members' comments? Member Fisher?
Yeah, I just want to say, Grace, I'm excited to have you on the team. And, you know, after reading your resume and, you know, some of your information that was given to us, I think you'll be a good match and bring a lot of strengths to our team. So thank you.
Thanks. Just to chime in?
Brindle, yes.
Say welcome. And, so Tara Brown kind of created this role for us, and we have felt the void since she has moved on. So thank you so much, and welcome, and look forward to getting to know you and seeing your good work.
Thank you, Member Brindle. That was a nice observation about feeling the void. We do have a sense that we haven't been doing what we want to be doing on sustainability issues. And that's also true with respect to participation in climate mayors, and having staff engage there more fully as well with staff that's involved with climate mayors. So we'll chat about that at some point in time here soon. All right. Well, thanks for being with us this evening, and welcome to Edina.
Thank you.
And we've got one other matter in special recognitions and presentations. And tonight, we're going to recognize absentee voting staff, and our city clerk Sharon Allison is going to address the council with regard to the work this portion of her team has been doing to ensure a free and fair election, and to make sure everybody's vote counts. Clerk Allison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, council members, the 2020 general election was an unprecedented election in so many ways for Edina voters and election staff, starting with COVID, which led to voters being encouraged to vote absentee or early by mail, and that they did. Unofficially, Edina had a 90% turnout, the highest turnout we're aware of, and 75% of this was absentee or early voting, with only 25% of voters going to their polling place yesterday. I would like to recognize and thank the election staff who worked tirelessly and without complaints to make this unprecedented election a success in Edina, starting with the absentee staff who processed an estimated 7,880 voters who chose to vote absentee at City Hall. This includes spoiling or voiding and reissuing an unprecedented 1,923 ballots. This means voters applied for a ballot online, but for whatever reason, did not want to vote that ballot, so a new one was issued to them. Between September 18th and October 26th, approximately 182 voters were processed daily. And between October 27th and November 2nd, when voters could put their ballot directly into the ballot counter, this number increased to approximately 493 voters daily. The absentee staff was responsible for making sure every issued or spoiled ballot was accounted for at the end of each day, among other important tasks. The absentee staff were Kathy Sella, Gloria DeBerg, Suzanne Falvaca, Mary Artip, Kate Johnson, Jennifer Roach, Beth Sobled, Donna Tilzner, Mary Jean Weigle, and Margaret Zeranova. The temporary staff we hired to handle the absentee ballot drop-off tent in the City Hall parking lot were invaluable. Almost all of these volunteers reached out to me to see if we needed help, and we did. I call them my tent people, and they received an estimated 6,750 dropped-off ballots. When old man Winter decided to cut our beautiful fall short, without complaints, they bundled up and kept on going for democracy. Some of them also worked as greeters in City Hall, greeting voters upon arrival. They were Leird Beard, Ron Berg, Ann and David Braden, Chris Franken, Isabel Falvaca, Nancy Haley, Rachel Langgraf, Liz Matassa, Virginia McCarthy, Taylor Palomas, Penny Ream, and Judy Schwartz. I'd also like to thank all the election judges who worked at the polling places yesterday, especially the 70-plus new election judges who stepped up to serve because they were at a lower COVID risk, unlike the older population of election judges who could not work. I would be remiss if I did not give a shout-out to my election night crew, whose behind-the-scenes work brought this unprecedented election to a close. They were Lynette Biano, Janet Canton, Dan Herzeman, Jennifer Garsky, Kate Johnson, Nate Johnson, Reece Akarim, Terry Clapperick, Heidi Lilly, Liz Olson, Frank Petrovic, Dave Snaza, Betsy Sutterlin, Mary Jean Weigle, and Margaret Zeranova. And last, but not the least in any way, in fact, to me, she is the most valuable of all the staff, Jane Tim, our deputy city clerk, my right and left-hand woman. Jane, thank you for your guidance, and most of all, your angelic-like patience. Thank you all for your service to the city of Edina.
That was a fabulous tribute, just terrific. Thank you, well crafted. And to know that we were alive and participating in city government, when we had the largest voter turnout of eligible voters in Edina history is something really special.
Yes, absolutely.
All going to feel good about. So...
Thank you for allowing me to recognize them.
Now you're making me think about whether we were the top voter turnout city in the state of Minnesota. So we'll have to find out that data. I'm sure that there are others that had equally high voter turnout. So any council members wish to comment? Member Staunton?
The good news is that all the elections after this will be easy. Congratulations, Sharon. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
Thank you. Well, I've served as a judge numerous times, and now, as I go off of city council, you are going to be able to add me to your list again, so I will be able to be a judge again. And it is, it's a great experience. It's one of these, you do get this kind of amazing feeling of seeing democracy at work right in front of you. And it's pretty cool. And then you see your friends in the neighborhood as well, which is nice. So, but thanks for your hard work, and it's much appreciated. And I'm sure there are a lot of people that really have no idea how much work goes into it, but there is. And it's important work, and you're called on to do it every couple of years. It's not something that you do every day. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Member Brindle.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Sharon, I just wanted to thank you for, I mean, your presentation just now was really fabulous to individually thank all of these people. And I will admit, in past years, you know, I walk into the polling place, I'm in there for five minutes, I cast my ballot, and, you know, I appreciate the work of the volunteers. But until this year, I didn't really, really think about it. And there were a number of times that I had to go to City Hall and sign documents over the past couple months. And seeing all of the work going on, and how it was going on, and the organization, and all of that, really was more front of mind for me, not to mention just everything we've all just lived through or living through. But to see how it was done here in Edina made me very proud and very confident in the process. So thank you to you and to all of the people that worked with you.
Thank you, Member Fisher.
Thank you, Member Fisher. And I'm sorry, Member Anderson couldn't be here. I'm sure he's got some comments, although I see somebody in the phone line.
He has joined at 7:29, Mayor Hovland.
Well, what do you think about that? This time around, I can assure you, it's not the router or the modem, Comcast, actually. There's no phone television or internet here. But Sharon, I'm glad that I was able to get in for this, because I was over at City Hall a couple times myself, and I did drive by often. And what I noticed was an orderly I noticed was an orderly, very, um, uh, upbeat, pleasant group of people working all the time. And it was so interesting just to come across people, you know, friends and neighbors, everybody smiling. And so that the process itself was not, uh, a concern for anyone. And I certainly know that wasn't a concern for anyone in the community at all. So, congratulations on an absolutely top drawer effort and wonderful execution. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson.
Thank you, Member Anderson. All right. Well, um, there you go. So, we're going to move on now to the, um, next portion of the agenda, which is reports and recommendations. The first matter there, the first of two matters, is one that, uh, Fire Chief Tom Schmitz is going to take. He's got an amendment or proposed amendment to the, uh, city code that he wants us to consider with regard to fire protection and, um, uh, the possibility of requiring, uh, automatic fire sprinkler retrofits in certain high-rise buildings in the city of Edina. Chief Schmitz, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Very great. I'd like to welcome, and, uh, Rick is in charge of our fire prevention crew. Uh, they're in charge of all the fire prevention, education, code enforcement. So, they're a very busy group of people. Um, so Rick knows all the ins and outs of all the fire codes. Um, I will be presenting tonight and Rick Hammer Schmidt will be available to answer specific code questions if you have any. You have my staff report in your packets, and with that, I'll get started here. So, as you know, the city adopts and incorporates by reference the most current Minnesota State Fire Code and International Fire Code, except for the optional appendix chapters. The most current codes are the 2020 Minnesota State Fire Code and the 2018 International Fire Code. Jurisdictions must accept the appendix chapters through a separate action. Uh, we most recently did this at the October 20th council meeting, when we adopted Appendix, Appendix N, which was the indoor trade shows and exhibitions. Some of the other, uh, appendices we have, we have adopted Appendix B, which is, uh, uh, the fire code for fire flow requirements for buildings, Appendix D, fire apparatus access roads, Appendix O, fire, um, or barbecues on balconies or patios, just to name a couple. We don't accept them all. We accept the ones that are pertinent to, um, our city. Today, I'm bringing, uh, for your consideration and the action, um, the first reading of ordinance number 2020-15 that would amend Chapter 18, Section 1864 of the city code adopting Appendix M of the Minnesota State Fire Code. Appendix M is the high-rise building's automatic sprinkler requirement. This appendix was added to the revised 2020 Minnesota State Fire Code. Adopting this amendment would require automatic fire sprinkler retrofits in specified high-rise buildings. So, some history behind this addition to the Minnesota State Fire Code. As you know, in Minneapolis High Rise Fire last year, the day before Thanksgiving, where five people died, the fire was on the 14th floor of a 25-story multi-residential public housing complex. The building did not have fire sprinklers installed. A recent finding on, uh, from the State Fire Marshal's Division stated, had this building been protected with fire sprinklers, it is the opinion of the State Fire Marshal Division that no loss of life would have occurred. In the same year, in the city of St. Paul, they had a high-rise fire on the 11th floor of a 16-story multi-residential senior high-rise, resulting in the evacuation of hundreds. This fire was controlled by an automatic fire sprinkler system. No deaths were reported. So, I've heard from many building owners of high-rise buildings over my career that their buildings will not burn. And for the most part, this is true. High-rise buildings are built with non-combustible materials. It is extremely rare that a high-rise building would burn to the ground or collapse. This is not the issue with these buildings, however. The problem is the nature and the speed of the material that are burning in today's fires, along with the rapid propagation of toxic smoke, that are the major contributing factors in fatalities in non-sprinkled high-rise fires. No fire department can outperform a properly installed and maintained automatic fire sprinkler system in the early containment and possible extinguishment of fires. These systems have proven themselves as a key component in saving lives of its occupants, emergency responders, and the structure itself. High-rise building is defined as the building with an occupied floor located more than 75 feet above the lowest level of fire department vehicle access. All of our buildings in Edina that meet this definition comply with the current code requirements, except for two buildings. That is our focus. The two buildings are 6,400 Berry Road, also known as the Edina Towers, and 7,500 York Avenue, York Cooperative. The 6,400 Berry Road is a 17-story multi-residential structure, structure built in 1969. There are 193 market rate units in this building. There is no sprinkler system, um, except for in the basement and the parking garage. Otherwise, no sprinklers in the hallways or the units themselves. 7,500 York Avenue is a nine-story multi-residential structure built in 1977. There are 337 senior assisted condominium living units in the structure. However, all common areas, including the parking garage, are sprinkled. So, common areas are lobbies, hallways, um, and like. However, there are no sprinklers in the units themselves. So, the most common cause of fires for us is kitchen fires, and that's, uh, we've got some history of kitchen fires in that structure. So, we, we pulled some numbers, just some recent numbers from both of these buildings, uh, specific to fires. Um, and 6,400 Berry, um, just recently, in August of this year, we had a pretty significant kitchen fire, uh, on the 14th floor of 6,400 Berry. We've had a few others in the past several years, um, in that building. Same with 7,500 York Avenue. In the last several years, we've had four fires, um, in that building. Luckily, none of those fires have resulted in loss of life or significant injury. So, what does this mean for the two buildings? Adopting Appendix M would require the building owners to file a compliance schedule with the city fire marshal, not later than 365 days after receipt of a written violation. The compliance schedule shall not exceed 12 years for an automatic sprinkler system retrofit. So, what does this mean? If we adopt this, um, ordinance or this amendment, um, our inspectors would go in, recognize that they did not have the sprinkler systems compliant with today's code. They would write down a violation order, then they would have 365 days to come up with a plan, and they would have 12 years to retrofit their buildings. So, tonight is the first reading. Our next step in the fire department is to notify the two building owners, informing them of the proposed amendment to the ordinance. We don't want them to be surprised by our actions. Our goal here is life safety, and we want everybody on board with it. The second reading will come before the council for final adoption at the November 17th council meeting. And that is my quick briefing. Um, do you, and I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Chief Schmitz on this proposed amendment to the ordinances. Member Brenda?
Thank you. I, I want to be sure that I heard you correctly, Tom. Um, so, why, when, when it's discovered that a, as, as you say, when a violation has been identified, they have one year to come up with a plan?
Yeah.
12 years to retrofit the building?
That is correct. Yep. And we know, we know our buildings pretty well, especially these. This is, these two buildings, uh, are high-risk for us, simply because they do not have fire suppressions built into them. So, um, when we get alarms there, we, we're worried. Oh, and especially when it comes in as a reported fire in these structures. Because we know, um, that fire is well ahead of us, and then there's no fire suppression action going on prior to our arrival.
Well, I guess, I guess that's where my question is, is 12 years is a long time to put this plan in place and get the building retrofitted. Is that because it's so expensive? Or is, then why 12 years?
Well, I, you know, I don't know. I, I guess I don't know the specifics. Yes, it's, it's expensive. It takes a long time to do it. Uh, but I think that's all part of, uh, the, the, the work down at the Capitol to make this law get through that kind of the process, that 12 years would seem to be the, the area that, um.
Okay, it's, it's part of the law, that the 12 years is part of the law?
Yes, yes. Yeah. So.
All right.
We, we, we've worked over the years with, uh, some of our unsprinkled buildings, um, and worked out plans with them to sprinkle their buildings. Um, you know, we have a lot of, um, high-rises that you might call, or, or multi-story buildings that don't meet the definition of a high-rise, that this does not impact. So, uh, and they're unsprinkled. Um, and, uh, we would love if those could get sprinkled, but without a law, it's, it's not going to happen. That's my experience.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Fisher.
So, Chief, can you tell me, so I know we can't, we can't have a, um, code that's more restrictive than the state, but this notion of, um, explain a little bit more about these appendices and why, why is it that municipalities can actually not, like, why wouldn't every municipality be using Appendix M?
They may not have high-rises that meet this definition. So, a lot of these appendices are kind of unique. There are some that are specific to hazardous materials. We don't accept all of them. We, we, we look at all of them and we decide, all right, this one, um, can certainly have some application within our community, and we will bring that forth to the council for adoption. But there are, there are several others that we have not considered because those risks just don't reside within our community. So, that might be why some communities, um, have chosen not to do Appendix M. They may just not have those structures, or they just don't want to go up against it.
Right. I mean, oftentimes with, uh, different code requirements, they don't actually, they don't actually get instituted until a building owner is remodeling of some, some extent of their building before they're forced to do something. This sounds a little different that even if, let's say they just remodeled the entire building last year, we put this into place, it's got to happen within 12 years. It doesn't, doesn't matter when the next time they're doing a complete redo of the building, if I'm hearing you right.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's correct. Yes.
But at the same time, with a 12-year window, most buildings need to be refreshed. It really gives them an opportunity to plan it into their, um, you know, to try to fit it into some sort of a financial plan, some sort of a building retrofit plan, something to that extent, which I'm sure is why, you know, the legislature picked the 12 years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And also, the insurance, the re- the insurance return, we've heard, you know, there is, uh, sometimes a savings up to, you know, you can get your money back in seven to 10 years, we've heard, um, by installing fire sprinklers into your building. Um.
Yeah, I mean, there's a definite longer-term payback. You know, I was just looking, um, I just had a cost estimate up in, on my screen from a week ago. And like, a sprinkler system in a new building is about $4.75 a foot, probably add another dollar or two for the stand pipe. But, you know, that's times every square foot of the building. It's a big number. Um, but, you know, over time, I think, you know, and if they plan for it, it, the, uh, while it seems like a big number, um, the idea of actually saving lives, which this will do.
Yes.
Makes it seem, you know, very palatable, especially when they can plan it out over that number of years. So, um, you know, I, I think it's a, a reasonable, uh, approach.
And you could almost look at this as 13 years, right? Because they have 365 days to submit their plan and then 12 years to act on the plan.
Right. But especially, you know, the one building where we know we have a, you know, you know, hundreds of people that are seniors that probably aren't that mobile. Um, I mean, it's just that building in particular, I think, is a very high priority.
Member Anderson, did you have anything you wanted to inquire about?
Uh, just this, uh, so what I'm getting from, uh, Member Fisher's, uh, comments there, uh, you know, you're looking probably five bucks a foot, uh, 7,500 York. Most of those units are under 1,000 feet. Uh, they're individually owned, uh, on a cooperative basis. So, it's a special assessment to the, to each homeowner there, roughly $5,000. That, that's, it's in the ballpark. Um, and if I recall this Ebenezer is managing that property at this time, and I'm sure Chief, that your interface has been with the, the property manager there so far, I presume?
I would have to ask the fire marshal to respond to that.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that particular property, we haven't had any conversations about this.
I see.
That's the 7,500, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Well, I, I'm just, um, it's just, I'm thinking out loud more than anything else. So, but basically, it's, you know, somewhere in the range. I think it's under 1,000 feet there, but the retrofit, Member Fisher, correct me if I'm wrong, the retrofit would probably be more expensive. You're going into the ceilings, you're bringing the, the water supply into, uh, some central area for dispersment. But, but, one way or the other, the insurance return is offsetting. I'm just, I'm thinking in terms of approach, especially to those property owners, uh, you know, they're on, for the most part, on fixed incomes, and it will be an individual assessment. So, I'm just trying to think about how you, uh, how we move on that. But as you mentioned, they've got 12 years to do it, and maybe it's a special assessment that comes due on sale within that 12-year period, but no later than the completion of 12 years. Just trying to figure out how to put that far, that particular building. 6,400, I believe, is individually owned, and so that's a, that's a big number for them, but it would, the, the same principles would apply there. So.
Right.
Okay, okay. I think that's what I need. Thank you.
Member, Member Anderson, I, I, you know, the one good thing about 7,500 is they've already got sprinkler systems in the common spaces. So, the pipes are already running down the hallway, so the, the lift isn't as heavy in 7,500 as it would be in 6,400.
Right, good point. Thank you.
Other questions or comments for the chief? Chief, have we had any dialogue with, uh, 6,400 Berry Road?
We have in the past. We've tried to encourage them, especially after the Minneapolis fire. We did, uh, uh, Marshal Hammer Schmidt and his staff went out and met with, um, with the property owner. Um, the conversation didn't go very far. So, um, trying to encourage them to sprinkle their building, uh, so we did not experience what Minneapolis had just experienced. Um, yeah, it didn't, it didn't go anywhere.
All right. Thank you. So, they, they're aware of the fact that this is a potential issue that's out there, that they may have to deal with at some point in time?
I think, uh, there was a lot of discussion after the Minneapolis and a lot of discussion going down at the Capitol. So, I think some people that, high-rise owners were paying attention to a law that was moving through the process, uh, whether they know this actually came out. I'm not sure, but we're going to notify them, um, tomorrow, that, uh, we presented this tonight and that the second reading will be at the next council.
Okay. All right, other questions for the chief? Otherwise, is there a motion to adopt, uh, on a first reading basis? Ordinance number 2020-15, which would be an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Edina City Code concerning fire prevention and protection, uh, and potentially adding, um, Appendix M, high-rise buildings' retroactive automatic sprinkler requirement, uh, to the code?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
First, not in second, but I remember Fisher, it's a first reading basis. Uh, any further discussion? Call, call, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Brenda.
Hi.
Councilmember Fisher.
Hi.
Councilmember Stotin.
Hi.
Mayor Hublin.
Hi. The, uh, motion's approved on a first reading basis. Thank you, everybody. A really interesting presentation, Chief.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. All right, next matter we have in this portion of the agenda is, uh, the Director Urum has this matter, and it's a potential certification. that Director Urum has this matter, and it's a potential certification of delinquent utilities, which is something we do annually. And Director Urum, our finance director, welcome.
No, thank you, Mayor, Mayor, members of the city council. No real formal presentation tonight. We held a public hearing on October 20th. So the request is for the city council to adopt resolution that's presented in the packet. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Director Urum? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-11, which is a certification of the delinquent utilities as set forth in that particular resolution?
So moved.
Say again, who is the mover?
Member Fisher. Staunton or Fisher, we tied.
We tied.
All right, we'll give Member Fisher the moving part of it here, and Member Staunton the seconding. All right, a reversal of our last motion, I think. Anyway, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brindle.
Hi.
Councilmember Fisher.
Hi.
Councilmember Staunton.
Hi.
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Excellent. And Mayor Hubland.
Hi. Resolution 2020-11, the certification of the delinquent utilities embodied in improvement, BU 20, is approved. Thank you, Director Urum.
Thank you.
And next we'll move on to correspondence petitions. That portion of the agenda has a single petition in it. It is a petition that was filed requesting installation of a sump pump discharge line for stormwater improvement over, between 4808 and 4836 Towns Road. It was a resident petition. Is there a motion to receive that petition to install a sump pump discharge line for stormwater improvement between 4808 and 4836 Towns Road and refer it to the engineering department for further analysis?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Brindle, second by Member Staunton. Any further discussion with respect to the motion as stated? Roll call, please. Director Benarot?
Councilmember Fisher.
Hi.
Councilmember Staunton.
Hi.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Brindle.
Hi.
Mayor Hubland.
Hi. The petition is received. And next, regular correspondence. Has anything come in, Manager Neal, that you're aware of, since we commenced the meeting? All right, faking your head no. On to aviation noise update, Member Brindle.
Thank you.
You've only got a few of these to go.
Yeah. I actually might be staying on aviation.
I second that.
Staunton and I talked about this, and I'm happy to do it. So, but I mean, there's some, there's some technical stuff that you, that you get to know, and it's, and it's hard to hand, it's difficult to hand that off to someone. But aviation noise, we had a work plan discussion last week and looking at the 2021 work plan. And so the MAC staff has that in their hands for now. And the next meeting of the Noise Oversight Committee will be Wednesday, November 18th. And annually, that is our evening meeting, so it will, that meeting will be called to order at 6:00 PM. It will be, I'm sure, I'm sure it will be a virtual meeting. Our meetings are held on the phone. They're not held in a visual format. But, but that's, our next meeting is November 18th, so.
Good, thank you. That prompt, any questions from council members or Member Brindle? All right, Manager Neal, anything to add with respect to aviation noise?
No, nothing to add to that.
You still don't like it?
No, I still don't like it, yeah.
That thought. On to Mayor and Council comments. Members Staunton?
Three quick things, Your Honor. First, I want to thank Director Benarot for pinch hitting for our city clerk, who is getting a well-deserved early departure from our meeting this evening. And I know, I'm sure Member Anderson will probably be following up on the fact that she was keeping us on our toes by rotating who she called on. As the, as the last in the alphabet, it kind of took me by surprise, so. I'm anxious to return to the alphabetical. The second item is, I just want to note that we will have two new members. The election last night resulted in two new members who were elected to join us in January. I'm looking forward to that, but, and there'll be lots of time to welcome them and talk about their work. But I wanted to take the time to thank the other five people who ran for office. This is what makes our system work, and all of them acquitted themselves quite well. And as all of us who are elected officials know, it's not an easy task to put yourself out there. And I think they all did so with real grace and for all the right reasons. So I want to thank them for their efforts. And then third, third, I wanted to, all joking aside, suggest that we consider, if Member Brindle is willing after the first of the year, a different approach to the aviation noise kind of liaison, if you will. I do think there is a lot of technical expertise on this topic, and it would be really valuable if Mary were willing to stay on, for us to think about whether we want to, you know, appoint her or somebody who can be kind of riding herd on this stuff, because it is very technical. And once you've gotten up to speed on it, it's hard to hand it off. So that's something I would ask my colleagues and the staff to think about as we're approaching the end of the year and the beginning of next year.
Good. Thank you, Member Staunton.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. Member Anderson?
Yes. Well, actually, Member Staunton brought up a topic that I was going to address. And we've mentioned that Director Benarot has been able to keep us on our toes this evening. And I'm just wondering how the rotations arrived at. I thought it was alphabetical, and then, well, no, and then I thought, well, maybe it's seniority, no. And then I thought, well, it's serendipity. That's what it is. So thank you for doing that. I have the honor, actually, coming this Friday night, of addressing a couple of Cub Scout packs in Edina. They asked me to talk about the flag. And so I'm looking forward to that Friday night. I have to think about that a little bit. But I wonder if there's anything that any of our members, our staff, have in the back of their minds that they would like to bring forward to our local youth, especially our Cub Scouts? Let me know prior to that. I'll put together some remarks. And they also wanted to, I'm not quite sure how that tied together, but they'd like to put it into a perspective of serving as an elected official and also recognizing the flag, and maybe there's two separate topics there. So I'm looking forward to that. It ought to be fun. And also, just wanted to thank Member Brindle for volunteering to continue to keep her eye on aviation noise. And so I noticed that Member Staunton was quick to second her thought, and I would say the same thing. If there were a motion, I'd certainly be seconding it. So thanks for volunteering, Member Brindle.
Thank you, Member Anderson. I don't, yeah.
Wait till Ralph finds out.
And here he thought I was completely retiring.
For Fisher?
So the first thing I wanted to do, and Councilmember Staunton hit on this, is to really thank all of the candidates that ran for city council. It was really so comforting to, once I, you know, was able to see the first forum and see what was being, what they were, how they were responding to questions, and I mean, all of the candidates, to know as an outgoing council member that any one of those candidates would have done a terrific job here. And that was a lot, there was a lot of comfort in that. And so I thank, thank all those candidates. And do congratulate James Pierce and Carolyn Jackson. I think they'll do a fantastic job, of course, on the council. And then, you know, my only other comment, Councilmember Staunton said, all kidding aside, I'm going to bring all kidding back to the center. And, and I was kind of hoping to watch Councilmember Staunton and Councilmember Anderson as our will-be senior council members. I wanted them to stare down the barrel of that Aviation Noise Committee just for a while, wondering which one was going to have to take that on, because it's not one that you can be a slouch. You got to really go do your work. So I do really appreciate Councilmember Brindle's willingness to continue that, assuming you all approve it. So, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Well, I joined my colleagues in congratulating all the candidates that ran for the city council. I remember when.
Did you skip me on?
Yeah, no, I guess. I was thinking about you, and then I thought, what's wrong here? Something's not right. Because you talked during, you know, we've been concentrating on you here. So, Member Brindle, I was leaving you till the very end here, so you could do the wrap.
It's Director Benarot. She's got everything out of order, and you can't, you can't figure out what you're missing.
All right, well, thank you. And truly, in the notes that I wrote today, Kevin, I wrote pretty much what you said about when you put yourself out there and you run for office. And I remember when I decided to do this the first time I ran, I thought, you know, if I win, I win. If I lose, I lose. But you need good people on the ballot. And, and so that's, we had, we had a slate of good people. So I, I'm confident we'll see, we'll see, we'll see all of these candidates active in a variety of ways in the city, since there are, there are a lot of ways to plug in. So, and Sharon did a wonderful job of thanking the, and recognizing the election judges. That is a very important job. One thing, I did get a call this morning from a resident on West 56th Street. There is a sidewalk being proposed. It's on the sidewalk plan. It wasn't on the sidewalk plan. The 2016 plan didn't have it, but the current plan does have it. And, and so I think we need to look at this because the curb and gutter were placed in that area with the idea of not having a sidewalk there. So, so I think we need to take a good look at how that's going to work. These are shallow front yards, and, and what, if a sidewalk has to go there, then what, what can it be so that it, it fits in the area? But, but it is a concern. And there was a meeting between staff and the residents. I think probably Mark Nolan was probably still in the position as transportation planner at that time. And, and so they decided to move ahead with the, with the construction project without consideration of a sidewalk. So, so I'm a little concerned about that one. And as far as aviation, I have talked with the staff at the Metropolitan Airport Commission, the liaison to the Noise Oversight Committee, and said that, you know, I'm not going to run for reelection, but it's possible that the council would ask me to continue. And is that going to be allowable based on how the Noise Oversight Committee is put together? Because it's put together of elected persons and representatives from industry, from aviation. And, and they're fine. They're fine with it as long as it's a council appointment. So if that is the desire of the council, when that time comes, then I, I'm happy to do it. So those are my comments.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Member Brindle. We'll have a conversation about that. I think we're on a, you put us on an interesting track here in terms of thinking about how we get the reliable type of representation and information relative to airplane noise. So I think we'd all love to have you serve in that capacity. You know, about a week before the election, the high school debate team had a candidate forum, and they asked me to participate, and they had the seven, I think they had, well, maybe five of the seven candidates there. But it was just a terrifically well-done program by the entire debate team. And they asked real probing, difficult questions. And I thought, you know, as I, as I watched it after I was done with my portion of it, I was thinking, these candidates are all really thoughtful. They've done a wonderful job answering questions. They have this high level of enthusiasm for serving on the city council and serving their community. And it made me think back to when the filing deadline closed, and we had seven people apply to run for two open seats. Manager Neal did his candidate orientation work, and I said, how did it go? And he said, we got seven really good candidates. They all care about serving the town. And any of them, and they're all really attentive and want to learn as much as they can about serving the city. So to all of those folks that, that ran, and as I maybe mentioned before too, for the first time in the history of Edina, I think we had out of the total of seven, four persons of color in our community. The majority of the candidates were persons of color. And of course, James Pierce, who was elected to the city council, may be the first African-American to serve on the Edina City Council, which is, I think, obviously historic, even if he, you know, I don't know. But our Mr. Yancy from our formation days, whether he served in some equivalent capacity in leading the town, but here comes James Pierce to help lead the town. Potentially the first African-American to serve in that capacity, so it's wonderful to have him. And then Carolyn Jackson, who has done so much for our community, active in not only Rotary, but on the Edana Energy and Environment Commission, and doing race and equity work. Just sort of relentless volunteer in our community. So it will be, as Member Staunton says, a pleasure to invite both of them to the council. I'm thinking that with respect to the next meeting we have in November, I'll get in the right month, yeah, I was thinking it was still October, but in November, we've got a couple of important land use matters, I think, on the agenda. And it makes me wonder if we should figure out a way to accommodate at least a listening participation by our two council members-elect. So they get a little bit of orientation on a couple of these projects. I think it's both the US Bank project and the Southdale Office Center project that'll be in front of us. But I think that, if there's some orientation that could take place in advance of that meeting by Director Teague or yourself, Manager Neal, or Mr. Newendorf, that would be good. And then having them to be able to participate in the meeting, at least from an observation standpoint, might bring value as well. And then, let's see, tomorrow? Oh, let's see, I've got my fourth meeting of the Blue Ribbon Committee coming up. We're looking at Met Council Governance yet again. So the governor appointed about a dozen people to look at that issue, and that's coming up next week. And then, let's see here, there's, on Thursday, there's an Edina Seniors Resource Drive-Thru Fair at Bramar Golf Course parking lot from, I think it's from 1:00 to 2:30. I don't know if Member Brindle knows anything more about that. I just have my calendar or something that I wanted to note for people. At the Edina Senior Resource Center is having some type of drive-thru fair at Bramar that afternoon, 1:00 to 2:30.
I think it's being coordinated by the Edina Senior Center.
Okay. All right, very good. That's it for me. A pleasure being with all of you in these historic times. It's the interest in. It's, uh, uh, the interest in the outcome of elections, uh, continues at the highest level of our government, and, um, it's nice to have everything wrapped up here locally. And we know what our future is with respect to our leadership on our city council. Uh, Manager Neal?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Just two, two quick, uh, dates for you to keep in mind. Uh, one is just a reminder that, uh, we do have an extra, uh, council meeting in December. It's December seventh. It's the, it's the second Monday. I think it's the second Monday. It's December seventh at six o'clock. And it's the traditional meeting we have to, uh, consider our upcoming, uh, special assessment projects and order, uh, the projects if, if you are, if you care to that night. Um, and that's at six o'clock. Second is just to let you know that we are preparing, uh, some sort of, of, uh, virtual, um, opportunity to say a farewell for the public service of Councilmember Brindle and Councilmember Fisher. And we are planning to do that during the, uh, what would normally be the work session timeframe on our last council meeting of the year on Tuesday, December fifteenth. So more details on that coming. It wasn't going to be a, a surprise goodbye. Um, but, uh, we just wanted you to know that we are planning that time and, and reserving that time on all of your calendars so that we can, uh, so we can say our farewells in an appropriate way. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, your comment about December seventh actually caused me to think about December being budget adoption month, and we've got some, um, recommendations in front of us. Uh, one of the things we were giving consideration to was whether second half tax collections would be as robust as they were, uh, in the first half in May. If October, do we know anything about October yet? Because that might, uh, drive us one direction or another in terms of, uh, proposed budgetary increases.
Well, we wouldn't know that. We, we may know that by the time we get to that meeting in December. At least we have some.
Not now, we don't know, but we might know by then.
We may.
So I think if, the sooner you get that information, uh, you know, the quicker you can disseminate it. It might help people think about what they want to do. Because one of the considerations was we were gonna have a zero budgetary increase because of COVID. Then we get to thinking that people might need that break more next year, uh, than this year. So we were trying to feel our way on that. And I think, uh, tax collections, payments by our residents on their property tax bills might be influential on that decision-making process, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Manager Neal. And, uh, did that cause anything, uh, else to, uh, for council members to think about or comment on?
Yeah.
Member Brindle?
I just want to confirm the December schedule then. So Monday, December seventh is the first Monday in December. And that would be the, the special assessment meeting. And then Tuesday, December eighth would be our council meeting.
No, Tuesday, December first.
Oh, Tuesday, December first?
Yep.
Oh, so it is, so it is. You are correct. December first and fifteenth, so I'm glad I asked. Okay, all right, good. Okay, thank you.
All right, very good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
All right, we got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Brindle. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to adjournment.
Councilmember Brindle.
Hi.
Councilmember Fisher.
Hi.
Councilmember Staunton.
Hi.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Mayor Hubland.
Hi.
We stand adjourned. Director Bennerott, great job. Thank you.